To go.
Okay, all right, Mayor, we are ready for the October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty council meeting.
Excellent. Good. Good evening, everybody. Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meetings Act, was provided through the posting, mailing, and filing of the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings of the Town Council on December eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. The notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building, provided to the Westfield leader and the Star Ledger, and filed with the clerk of the town of Westfield. Mrs. Rowley, may I have a roll call?
Mayor Brindle?
Here.
Council members Havegood?
Here.
Harmley?
Here.
Legrippo?
Here.
Katz?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Contract?
Here.
Dardia?
Here.
Boys?
Here.
And now I ask you stand wherever you are for a salute to the flag. Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, just as for all.
Thank you. So Jim, have any updates for us?
Yeah, we do. A couple of things. On the agenda tonight, we have one late starter we added. It's really just adding money for the posters meter. And it's a common thing, and it leads right into the next thing, and that is need to add money to it because we're mailing out the leaf brochures later this week. We've already shared the leaf brochure on social media platforms, and so it is that time of year. We're gearing up for that. Couple of things about leaf collection this year that are a little bit new. So one, starting next Monday, residents can come down to the Conservation Center, which will be open Monday through Friday, and on weekends as well to, you know, drop off leaves if they have them. No permits required, just proof of residency. In addition to that, this year, the Green Team and the Public Works Committee and the council are trying to encourage voluntary bagging. So we are giving out ten free leaf bags to residents, and the first one hundred residents that show up to the center will receive a free leaf chute, which actually makes it much easier to put the leaves into the bags. And Public Works has that inventory there, so that starts Monday. And again, leaf season itself, the collection, right now is scheduled to begin Monday, November second. Of course, weather permitting, we'll see how the leaves fall. Right now, we had no rain for a while, and now we had a lot of rain, so that usually means the leaves stay up a little longer, but right now, we're scheduled to start on November second for the collection. And as we've done in the past, you'll be able to follow along on a daily basis of where the crews are to prepare yourself for collecting the leaves in the street. But yeah, another season of leaf collection about to begin. I want to just, you know, the leaf brochure went out. We did some changes there. We're also promoting the Adopt a Drain program in there, as well as mulching we did last year. So there are other options out there besides just putting your leaves in the street. So that's leaf collection, rain garden. I know we talked about this a few weeks ago. If any of you have been out to Tobaquas Park in the past week, you see a lot of big, deep holes that have been dug by Public Works with guidance from Rutgers University. So we embarked upon a very large rain garden project, which started last week. And it's going to be actually amazing, amazingly a big rain garden, but also a very beautiful one when it's all finished. So this week, Public Works is working with Rutgers to install some riverstone, as well as some bio retention soil. And then that'll be followed up shortly thereafter with specifically chosen plantings by Rutgers University for rain gardens, and hopefully that can happen with Green Team assistance. The girls' track and field team of the high school has been involved in helping us fundraise, and they're very interested in helping us plant when that comes around. So hopefully, next few weeks, weather permitting, we'll be able to wrap up the rain garden installation. And then, of course, over the winter, next thing will really be in full bloom, which is exciting. So that's exciting. And also, just a reminder, last meeting, we talked about the tax bills being mailed out, getting ready to be mailed out. They've been mailed out. Everyone should have received it at their home. And so just a reminder that tax collection, again, is November first. The mailbox outside the building has been very, very helpful. We've received a lot of tax payments already, so I want to thank the residents that have come by Town Hall or mailed their bills in. We received quite a few payments already, but of course, taxes are due November first with a ten-day grace period as normal. And again, this important note that, you know, this whole year, we've been talking about collections and the situation that everybody's in with the pandemic. But I can't say enough about the residents of this town that we've had very excellent collections percentage-wise with really no drop-off. And that speaks volumes to the residents and to the processes we've had to collect the taxes as well. So November first is the collection date. Looking forward to a very good last quarter as you wrap up the year and head into a new budget year in two thousand and twenty-two, or twenty-one, excuse me. And lastly, Chris, I think, I think, Chris, you received approval to start moving forward with Scotch Plains Avenue State. This is a state A job, so they're providing basically almost ninety-five percent of the money for the job. This is Scotch Plains Avenue between Avenue Chris and Dorian, I believe.
That's correct.
Okay, so I think Chris is holding a pre-construction meeting next week with the contractor. So we should see that work starting very soon, then we'll get notices out to everybody and post things on the website. But that is really one of the other big jobs we are doing this year, in addition to North Chestnut, which was done earlier this year. And of course, some of you have seen the county started their milling of West Broad Street, and hopefully, we'll be paving very shortly West Broad Street. This is one of their jobs, but that's going to be a nice improvement when that's done. So those are the big updates I had there, unless there's any questions. Still on mute.
Sorry. Of course, I just had a few updates for tonight, so I just, I want to remind everybody and thank them for joining us virtually tonight. Public comment will only be accepted via Zoom, so although we are live streaming it, we're viewing only on Facebook, and you can see the replay on Facebook, YouTube, and TV thirty-six. On the COVID front, there are now two hundred and fifteen thousand eighty-five confirmed cases of COVID in New Jersey to date, another three hundred and ninety-two still under investigation. As you read everywhere, the cases are starting to tick up, not just nationally, but here in New Jersey as well. Union County has reported eighteen thousand three hundred and sixteen cases in total, and the good news for Westfield is that we're reporting no new cases since my last update on Friday. So our total of reported cases since March is four hundred and one. On the economic front, Governor Murphy announced a hundred million dollars in additional coronavirus aid relief and economic security, which is known as the CARES Act, funding to support New Jersey residents and businesses affected by COVID, which is fantastic. The bulk of the money, seventy million dollars of it, will be distributed to restaurants, micro businesses, and other small businesses through the New Jersey Economic Development Authority. So hopefully, we will, you know, our businesses will be the beneficiary of some of that CARES Act. And I know that here in town, I know we've been working very diligently and ready to submit a reimbursement request from the county for monies to benefit our municipal expenses. A lot of people are very happy to know that the governor announced that indoor contact practices and competitions may resume for medium and high-risk sports. Those are things like basketball and hockey. I know that it made a lot of people very happy today. As you can imagine, there's several restrictions around it, but that will be starting shortly. There's also a new twelve million dollar rental mortgage assistance program for families that was revealed today, and all that stuff can be found on the Housing Assistance website. And also, there is, we're working locally. The Union County has put together an emergency restaurant grant program, which is established by the Freeholder Board, provides a total of two million dollars to qualified restaurants located in Union County on a first-come, first-served basis. Restaurants impacted are eligible for grants of up to twenty thousand dollars. I know Bob Zuckerman from the DWC has already been on it, and I know he was going to reach out to the Chamber of Commerce too for non-CID businesses. So hopefully, some of our restaurants will be the beneficiary of those grants as well. A lot of update and news on voting, and I do want to remind everybody about all the resources available in the upcoming general election. I personally had a very pleasant experience walking to the clerk's office today, depositing in that secure booth and secured box, and I will be tracking my ballot online, as I hope everybody does. And as a reminder, you know, I think my preference and would recommend that use the secure ballot drop-off box if you can, invite, vote in advance. It is primarily a vote-by-mail election, and if you do go to the polls on Election Day, the voting machine will only be available to those with disabilities. You can, when you go, if you, you can drop, you can either bring in your mail-in ballot and hand it in when you go, or you can use a provisional ballot. It's one thing to note that provisional ballots get counted last, and so, you know, if you want to get your vote in early, and you want to make sure it counts, I would suggest getting it now and putting it in the ballot drop box. But the Union County Vote dot com website is great. It has everything you need to know, including the Track Your Ballot app, how-to videos. So I definitely would suggest familiarizing yourself with that site if you haven't already. Next week, I'm very proud and happy that Chief Battle Lauren and I will be participating in a walk with seniors at ten thirty on the twenty-first in Menduaskin. We're going to begin at the gazebo and distribute free safety gifts to seniors, and I want to thank the lifelong Westfield group for organizing it. It was very popular last year. We'll be wearing masks, we'll be social distancing, and if you know any seniors, please encourage them to come, and they can go to westfieldnjseniors@gmail.com to, if they have information. And I want to thank Councilwoman Ada Mackey and the team of volunteers for reimagining Adam's Fest, to alt Adam for Adam's Fest, and all kinds of crazy, amazing ways that they have re-envisioned and imagined Adam's Fest in a COVID environment. So it's lots of great fun things that are happening, including the haunt-your-house contest with fifty-one entries, which is crazy. Wicked windows have been painted. Dudley's Drive-In, the movies, I think, are almost sold out, and the Haunted Trail, I think, in Tobaquas is almost sold out, if it isn't already. And there's a Maniacs Carving Chat and Contest, I think, this week on Friday. So tickets are selling very quickly, so please go on to the Adam's Fest website, check out what's going on. And there's still lots of ways to participate, even virtually, even though we all will certainly miss, you know, our, the big fun at the Yale Garden. So maybe next year, we'll just do it twice as big. I also want to do a big shout-out to our teachers and schools at a time when they need our support more than ever. There's a great initiative that's being provided by the Westfield Education Fund. It's launched this week. It's called Spreading Thanks to Our Teachers. It's a lawn sign fundraiser, and they are encouraging families to display a public thank you to our teachers and students for being true heroes in this challenging year. And so the signs will be available for display starting in late October for thirty dollars each, and all proceeds go to the Westfield Education Fund for innovation in the schools. So you can visit the westfieldfund.org/lawnsigns to figure out how you can get yours. I'd also like to thank our Mental Health Council for sponsoring an upcoming webinar in collaboration with the school district that will provide tips and strategies for parents on how to help your kids manage stress and anxiety during this pandemic. If you're asking yourself, is this typical behavior, or should I be worried, and so many of us are, then this seminar is for you. It'll be on October twenty-second at seven o'clock, and you can find more information about the webinar and the Zoom meeting at westfieldnj.gov/mentalhealthcouncil, and that can get you your Zoom sign and information. And on tonight's agenda, a couple of things that we're doing. Very importantly, we are continuing to lay the groundwork to provide incentives for residents to voluntarily designate their historic homes, by providing five-year tax abatements on the value of their improvements. In order to do that tonight, we will first vote on a resolution to designate the entire town as an area in need of rehabilitation, and then we'll vote on ordinance on second reading, providing for the implementation of the five-year tax exemption and abatement law, which will then have that designation apply only to the historical designated homes. This ordinance simply amends the tax abatement previously implemented to the downtown special improvement district, and will expand it now to include historically designated properties with the town. So, and just as a very important reminder, this tax abatement only applies to the value of improvements, so therefore, it does not impact any current tax revenue paid to the town, so it's only on the increment. And finally, you can join, I hope everybody does, Chief Battle Lauren and me tomorrow morning at nine thirty for a Facebook Live discussion, where we'll talk about recent police activity in towns, some of the department's current initiatives, Halloween guidance. We're getting lots of questions from parents about Halloween and more, and we will address them tomorrow. If you can't make it live, obviously, it'll be available for replay. So if you do have a question you'd like us to address, you can either submit it in advance at westfieldnj.gov/facebooklive, or you can just submit your comments if you're watching tomorrow in the Facebook Live comments, and we'll be addressing them as they appear. So, and tonight, we're moving on to our business agenda. Once again, I will be enforcing Robert's rules to make sure that this meeting stays on topic and it runs efficiently. So please keep comments to the relevant business at hand, and the public will only be allowed to comment during the public court portion of a specific ordinance or later the general comment portion, but can speak only once on a particular topic. I want to, you know, make sure I live up to my obligation to manage these council meetings, and will do all I can to ensure that we stay on topic this evening. And I know you all will appreciate that and cooperate. So thanks, as always, for your interest and your engagement, and now we can move on to tonight's agenda. So, Mrs. Rowley.
Yep, Mayor, there are four advertised hearings tonight. The first is for General Ordinance Number Two One Nine One, an ordinance to amend the code of the town of Westfield, Chapter Twenty. Anyone who wishes to be heard on General Ordinance Number Two One Nine One, please virtually raise your hand to make your comment. Be sure to include your name and address for the record.
Seeing none, Mayor, you may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed.
Second is General Ordinance Number Two One Nine Two, an ordinance to amend certain provisions of the land use ordinance of the town of Westfield to include a report and recommendation of the Westfield Fire Department on development applications. Anyone who wishes to be heard on General Ordinance Number Two One Nine Two, please virtually raise your hand and make your comment. Be sure to include your name and address for the record.
Anyone want to speak on this ordinance? Raise your hand. Seeing none, Mayor, you may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed.
Third is General Ordinance Number Two One Nine Three, an ordinance to amend certain provisions of land use ordinance of the town of Westfield by defining artisan manufacturing and establishing them as permitted principal use in certain zone districts. Anyone who wishes to be heard on General Ordinance Number Two One Nine Three, please virtually raise your hand and make your comment. Be sure to include your name and address for the record.
Anyone like to speak on this ordinance? Raise your hand, please. Seeing none, Mayor, you may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed.
The last one is General Ordinance Number Two One Nine Four, an ordinance amending General Ordinance Number Two One Seven One, providing for the implementation in the town of Westfield of the five-year tax exemption and abatement law pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon twenty-one dash one. Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance Number Two One Nine Four, please virtually raise your hand to make your comment. Be sure to include your name and address for the record.
Anyone like to be heard on this ordinance? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, Mayor, you may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed. Councilwoman Mackey, please move for the adoption of code review and town property committee ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number Two One Nine One on second reading, an ordinance to amend the code of the town of Westfield, Chapter Twenty.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Harmley?
He's saying yes.
Councilman Legrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried.
I would like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number Two One Nine Two on second reading, an ordinance to amend certain provisions of the land use ordinance of the town of Westfield to include a report and recommendation of the Westfield Fire Department on development applications.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Harmley?
Yes.
Councilman Legrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried.
Next, I would like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number Two One Nine Three on second reading, an ordinance to amend certain provisions of the land use ordinance of the town of Westfield by defining artisan manufacturing and establishing them as a permitted principal use in certain zone districts.
May I have a second?
Second, Dardia.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Harmley?
Yes.
Councilman Legrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried.
Lastly, I would like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number Two One Nine Four on second reading, an ordinance amending General Ordinance Number Two One Seven One, providing for the implementation in the town of Westfield of the five-year exemption and abatement law pursuant to NJSA forty-eight twenty-one dash one.
May I have a second?
Second, Havegood.
Any discussion?
Mayor, I thought it might be, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I thought it might be helpful just to clarify a little bit, since this is an amendment to an ordinance that we passed just a little while ago. It's basically allowing the same tax abatement privileges to people who designate their homes and want to make, you know, improvements to them. So any increased value that would show up in a tax revaluation wouldn't impact the owner until, you know, it slows it down so that they can enjoy the improvements, but not have the tax impact for five years.
Great, thank you. Any discussion, any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havegood?
Yes.
Councilman Harmley?
Yes.
Councilman Legrippo?
No.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the Town Council Executive Session and Regular Meeting of September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty?
Oh, moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Mrs. Rowley, do we have any petitions or communications?
No, Mayor.
Now, it is time for open discussion by citizens. Please virtually raise your hand to make your comment on any subject on which the council is jurisdiction, and be sure to state your name and address for the record.
Anyway, first speaker, John Blake. Mr. Blake, are you there? Name and address, please. Mr. Blake? There you go.
He's on mute, Jim.
Yeah, I know. There you go. Mr. Blake?
Carlton Road, Westfield, New Jersey. I just wanted to ask about the problems surrounding the wheels that seem to have been misappropriated over at the Department of Public Works. If it was a theft, have you reported it to the prosecutor? If it's not a theft, how did the tires and wheels that are, I understand, worth thousands of dollars, get transferred, and did the town get any money?
We can't comment on any employee matters or litigation, Mr. Blake, as you well know.
No, if it is a town matter, you can merely say it is not criminal, and we don't have to report it to the prosecutor. Or you say it is criminal, and then the Attorney General guidelines say you can't make comment until the prosecutor's office does something. But if you have not reported it to the prosecutor, then it is a town matter. And I was just wondering whether or not, since it's not criminal, were they sold and did you get money? That has nothing to do with whether or not the person who has the tires paid a proper amount or didn't, but who told him he could have them?
Mr. Blake, this is a public comment portion of the meeting, and so we'll address any comments once the public comments are closed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Blake. Anyone else like to speak? Raise your hand virtually. Mr., let's see, Mr. Blancato? Are you there?
Yes, this is Michael Blancato. I just have one question. I don't think that we were prepared for the town center for the fall. I don't think anybody thought that the COVID would last this long, so that we don't have, like, any type of agreements to do, like, more permanent, semi-permanent pergolas or anything like that. But I am wondering about snow removal, not snow plowing, snow removal for the town center. Has there been any thought behind that? I mean, it's already too late for pergolas or doing additional heaters or anything like that. But has there been any thought at least for snow removal? We used to do that in the eighties and early nineties here, and then that stopped. I would hope that with this COVID and the crisis that we have, that the town does more than that we did just a couple of years ago. Last year, we were very lucky without snow, but if this year the snow comes, I'm hoping that we do something with snow removal, not snow plowing, actually taking the snow from the town center and bringing it somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to tap into, you want to ask a question?
Yes, hello, this is Matt Kadoche, tapped into Westfield. I believe it was discussed that there's no bulky waste pickup this year. I was curious if someone, if you could, you know, discuss how that decision came to be and some of the things that are being done instead. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Anyone else like to be heard? Anyone else like to be heard? Seeing none, Mayor, you may close this public portion.
I close this portion of the meeting, and before moving to bills and claims, I'll just address a couple of things. So, Mr. Blake, just to reiterate on your comment, we can't comment on any employee matters or any pending investigations. And so, that's really all I can say about that. Mr. Blancato, what I would suggest, I hope there's a meeting tomorrow night for the property owners with myself and Bob Zuckerman from the DWC. This is exactly the type of information that we want to hear from property owners regarding what kind of support they might need to get through the, you know, the fall and winter months during the pandemic. So I certainly hope that you have the information on how to participate. If not, Bob Zuckerman can give you the Zoom link, and I think they send emails out to everybody. But I definitely would love you to attend and raise that question and any other concerns you might have tomorrow night. And like I said, both myself and Mr. Zuckerman will be there. And for Matt Kadoche, to tap out, I would just suggest as a member of the press that you just take that question offline, and we can, and reach out to maybe Jim Gilde tomorrow to answer a question about bulky waste. So with that, I will, let's move on to bills and claims. Councilwoman Havegood?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move bills and claims in the amount of seven hundred and four thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighteen cents.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. So next on the agenda, reports of standing committees, beginning with the Finance Policy Committee. Councilwoman Havegood?
Thank you, Mayor. I have thirteen resolutions, and I'd like to move the first resolution authorizing the C-1 warrant for dog The first resolution authorizing the CFO warrant for dog licenses, December 2020. The second, authorizing the CFO to draw warrant to the Treasury, State of New Jersey, for marriage civil union license fees. The third, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrant to the Order of the Treasury, State of New Jersey, for burial permit fees. The fourth, a resolution authorizing the CFO to refund Recreation Department fees. The fifth, a resolution authorizing the CFO to refund dumpster security payment. The sixth, a resolution authorizing the CFO for refund of a tree permit. The seventh, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrant for third quarter construction officials' state permit fees for 2020. Eight, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrants for the 2019 pursuant to Tax Court of New Jersey. Ninth, resolution authorizing the tax collector to participate in an electronic tax sale. The tenth, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrant for risk management consultant fee. Eleven, a resolution authorizing a contract for municipal energy aggregation program. The twelfth, a resolution awarding the contract for Phase Two meeting room upgrades. And thirteen, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw a warrant for replenishment of postage meter.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, may I just chime in here? I wanted to just, on the call with us, I believe, is Mark Friedberg. Mark Friedberg is the current Chair of the Technical Advisory Council. And I just wanted him to say a few words, if you don't mind. We've been involved in the Technical Advisory Council as we proceeded through this discussion with upgrading our council chambers with technology, which is, everything's kind of changed since the COVID and what we had to do in the room versus what we were originally thinking. So Mark and his committee have been very helpful so far in reviewing some of the proposals we received. And, and of course, we'll be involved as we go to the next step now, which is designing the technological upgrades that will actually hopefully be installed sometime in 2021 in the room, so that when we get back to in-person, we'll have not just in-person capabilities, but Zoom capabilities in the room, even if we're there in person, screens for both the council members and the public, cameras for both the public and council members, and other, many other options that will benefit the court planning board and Board of Adjustment. So if you don't mind, I think, Mark, if you're there, you want to raise your hand, I can let you say a few words. But it's going to be important to get a hear from the TAC that, and how they're, they're assisting us. Mark, are you there?
And Jim, it's important to note, too, that we're going to submit a lot of this.
... destructional video that they see.
Mark?
Followed by activities. So listening, reading, writing, speaking.
Is that back to school night?
Mark, you're back to school night. Wrong Zoom. Jim, I was just saying, it's important to note that we were submitting for reimbursement, right? For many of these expenses?
Yeah, so there are things that we're doing now that we've had to change what we've been doing on the fly. So this is one of those examples where.
Some kind of speaking activity. The students are, I would do the activity.
Mark? We would actually be able to submit some of these for, for CARES Act money, potentially reimbursing part of this cost, as well as website, which is underway now. We may be able to get some reimbursement for that as well, in addition to other costs we're, we're submitting for normal, you know, COVID expenses. So try one more time, if you're there, Mark. Let me see if I can get you a lot of talk here.
Hey, Jim, I think he said that at 8:40.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, 8:40, okay, okay. We'll wait a few minutes then, Mark. Okay?
I think he's there.
Yeah, I'm here.
How are you?
Let me get my bearings.
Sure, just, just, Mark, to say, you know, I just gave the council, we, we have a motion and second on the floor. Before they voted on it, I thought it might be helpful just to hear a minute or two from you about your involvement in the, this council design steps and just the support of the TAC so far and, and the assistance to provide as we go forward.
Sure. Sorry I'm late, missed, missed the call. Is my sound okay?
Yes.
Okay. Just a side note, I was at back to school night on my other monitor, so I.
We heard.
You heard, oh, sorry. That was señorita. Yeah, you got it, okay. So let me, I'll just take a few minutes, I'll be really brief. So a couple of words on the Technology Advisory Committee or TAC. For those of you who haven't heard from us before or not familiar, we're an independent volunteer organization comprised of Westfield residents. We have a variety of technology expertise and backgrounds in the private sector. And we also have one member who does a lot of work with government and education. So in the public sector as well. We were first formed in 2018 by Mayor Brindle. Scott Katz sits on the committee as our liaison to the mayor and the town council. Jim also serves on our committee to provide guidance, obviously tactical input and prioritization. You know, over the few years I've been involved, we've, we've had success, and there's been shifting and, and changing of interests in different areas. So that, that's an important aspect to kind of how we're involved and how we can help based on the priorities of the council and the town needs. The other members are Victor Liu, Andrew Bauer, David Siegler, Eric Morrow, and Mark McMahill. I'm the Chair of the committee from, starting in January of this year. And our objective is to really, you know, provide our knowledge and support to the mayor, the town council, to Jim, you know, where we can regarding technology vision, technology management, and risks. And I'm hoping as Chair of this committee that we can see not just an increased emphasis on it, but you know, there also needs to be a managed budget and exercise in what to spend and where to spend it. So hopefully we can help guide that as, as, as the needs change and you, and you do more. Regarding tonight's pending resolution to award the contract to FVHD, the committee has, has worked with Scott and Jim, you know, for the better part of six, seven months, reading and reviewing the various proposals and other supporting technical documents. We've been involved from the beginning. And, you know, we find that this upgrade to the council chambers, although we're not sitting there now, is very long overdue. And we agree with the approach recommended in the contract, which speaks specifically to, you know, just doing a design and, and getting the, the details of a design on paper, including there's things that have some risk, like is the wiring too old? And is there asbestos? So really just getting a good design, which can control the costs. So we agree with that approach. And we've, from what we've seen and heard so far, we expect that the chamber, although we're not there now, the chamber acoustics and sound will be much better. I think there'll be significantly improved collaboration inside the chamber and outside the chamber. And from what we've read and heard, you know, we expect that there'll be a great simplification of a lot of the paper that moves around in the room. And, and those paper-based processes should become simpler and easier for people to see it. And then the, the last comment that came from the committee, and I'm just bringing these, these comments forward from other members, was based on where we are now, and there hasn't, I, I don't think there's been an in-chamber meeting like there used to be, but there will be soon, hopefully. So in a post-COVID world, you know, we would expect that the things that we've learned during the pandemic should be incorporated into the design. And what we've learned from, you know, these types of meetings and how we can integrate in-person and not in-person in the design to, to make it, you know, really to leapfrog a little bit instead of just, you know, adding monitors and microphones and speakers to the room. So we're, we're hoping to add value in that area. So we, we like the proposal, and those are our comments from, not just me, but from the other committee members.
Mark, I'll just add my thanks to you and the committee. And I just also want to remind everybody that the TAC was instrumental in the Westfield Connect app and bringing that forward and, and so forth. So we're happy that, Mark, you're the Chairman and your leadership and, and your level of engagement. So just want to say thank you to you and the committee for being patient with us while we finally get to this point.
Understood, thank you.
Scott, you have any thoughts, just as a liaison?
No, I just want to thank, thank Mark for showing up here today and for all the hard work that the, that the commission or the committee is, is putting forth. It's very interesting to see all of the experience that the group has in various aspects of technology. So thanks a lot, Mark. Thanks to, to you and your guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks, Jim. Okay.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks for coming on. Just, that was important that everyone heard that they're involved, and they're doing a great job, and I thank them for their help.
Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.
Hey, before we vote, can I just make one comment just to explain to the public just on the, on number 11, the energy aggregation program? Just to make sure everybody understands that this is also a multi-step process. And just for the public to recall, we did pass an ordinance to allow a program like this to actually occur. That, that got passed in September. So this is the next phase where we're going to hire consultants, no cost to the town at this stage, to actually go out into the marketplace and explore, can we save residents money by aggregating all of our residential energy supply and switch to a more renewable energy source? And if that turns out to be the case, then we would come back to the council and propose that, which would be implemented for all residents with an opt-out. So everybody can, anybody could opt out of it. So this is just the next step in the process.
Thanks.
David, how many consultants responded to the RFP?
Three.
Right.
The least costly option.
So Gable was chosen because of his least cost option?
Gable has the most experience, and they were, the fee that they would ultimately charge if a program were to move forward was the lowest significantly versus the other two.
Okay, so it was strictly price?
And, and expertise and competence.
Okay, so do you have any idea when we're going to go out to auction, or?
No, I think that's really, you know, from what I've heard, and I'm not an expert in this, that, that the market is, is receptive. So I think we want to move quickly, but they have the expertise, and I think they'll guide us. I think the next step, if, if the resolution passes, is to have a kickoff meeting and let them dictate the timing, you know, so it has advantages as possible to the town.
Okay, you are, you are familiar with what happened with Gable and Glen Rock, right?
I'm not.
Yeah, Glen Rock was a debacle because they promised them a certain rate, and Gable wasn't able to deliver that rate after the contract was signed. So you should look into it.
Okay, I mean, we did talk to Essex. There's a consortium in Excess County that used Gable and delivered a 10, 10% decrease and a switch to, I think, 75% renewable two years ago. So, and they have a vast amount of expertise. So not sure of the Glen Rock specifics, but they have done this a lot in, in.
Glen Rock was the most recent, so.
Okay.
Um, okay, did we get to second all those?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm, yes and everything except for number 11.
Oh, got it. Opposed? Number 11 for Mark. This, okay, this has passed. This motion is carried. Okay, next is the Code Review and Town Property Committee. Councilwoman Mackey?
I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution delineating an area in need of rehabilitation.
May I have a second?
Second, Dardia.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Haggard?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
No.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Thank you.
Jim, you're muted.
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes. This motion is carried. Next is the Public Works Committee. Councilman Contract?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing a rebid for the 2021 curbside collection of recyclable material.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. May I have a, may I, yeah?
Can I just make one or two extra comments just associated with Public Works and the Green Team?
I'm sure.
Yeah, just really briefly, just, first of all, I just wanted to thank a lot of members of the Green Team, as well as the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and other organizations, the, the Westfield Friends of the Library. The free market was held, I think, since our last meeting. When we collected, we estimated about four tons of goods, and about a ton was taken back by residents, and we donated most of the rest to Green Drop. And we filled up their trucks. So it was a wonderful event, very safe. And we did, I think, something really positive for the environment, as well as for some, from well-deserving families in the general area. Also, a big thank you to, to all the folks who participated in the park cleanups this weekend. I know we had about 50 or 60 volunteers at Tamakus, where Councilman Katz and I were. I know there was a big group at Brightwood and Clark Park. And sadly, we did, we did find a lot of garbage, which is, which is unfortunate. So just a reminder to residents to please don't litter. I would love to see us never have to do another park cleanup again. It's probably wishful thinking, but that should be our goal. Also, just to augment what Jim talked about with leaf collection, look out for a Green Team leaf collection video that should be released next week that will bring to life all the different ways to collect leaves in town, including mulching, as well as the free leaf bags. We'll be demoing how to use them, as well as the free leaf bag holder or chute. So check that out. And then lastly, our Westfield Home Energy Savings Program is still going on. If residents recall, we passed this last year as a way of helping residents save money by upgrading their, you know, heating systems, their insulation. There is grants, low-interest loans, and we have a special $49 home energy audit as part of the program. If you want to have a chance to win a free energy audit, that's the new news. You just email info@ceelpower.com, C-I-E-L-power.com, and they're going to give away one free energy audit to any resident who's interested. So that was it.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried, and this meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Bye.
Everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.